Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to members of the public who've come along this evening. We've got Karen Adams in person and Rebecca Clark on Zoom. I think both of you would like to speak in our public session, which is your opportunity now, basically. Okay, Rebecca, you were present first. Would you like to start?
I'd rather not, actually.
Okay.
No pressure there, Karen.
What's the time of this meeting, sir?
Well, the session is 15 minutes, so in theory you've got seven and a half minutes each.
I haven't prepared a slick speech, so I'm speaking from the heart. And the reason I haven't prepared a slick speech is because this matter has been too painful to mull over, to use over. We know the incident. We know that hate speech was placed online, which was denied. And we've waited, how long have we waited? Two years for this to be acknowledged as what it was, a hate crime. My question to the meeting is Buckingham, who are you? Who are you? Who are we? You know, what is this about? In the aftermath, there were protests and murmurings of free speech. What is free speech? Are we just pursuing the freedom to hate one another? Is that what we're doing? Or are we, should we, pursuing good speech? The power of good speech to unify, to edify, to support, to coagulate as a community? You know, what are we chasing? What are we defending and covering? Is my question. You can tell that I'm angry and I've held this angry for a long time. And I let it go, but this is resurfaced, so it's quite fresh, so forgive me. There's no courage in hate speech. There's no courage. Geraldine Collins put up a grotesque post and at the end of it, it basically claimed that black and brown men come to the UK to carjack, to rob and to rape your daughters. So I would ask Geraldine and everyone that's in hard pursuit of free speech stroke hate speech, let, come back in time with me to the deathbed of my father, who was pinned out four point restraint after five strokes and was blind. Come back with me in time and whisper in his dying ears, you raped our daughters. Would you have the courage to do that? I don't think you would. Geraldine doesn't have the courage to even admit that she was wrong. She claimed that police was investigating this. She claimed that she had been hacked. These were all so obviously lies. She must feel an utter shame about this and rightly so. Would you or would anyone who's in hard pursuit of free speech come back with me to the point at which I gave birth to my beautiful brown son and whisper in his ear, you're going to rape our daughters? Would you do that? Because that's what this speech is. That's how we live it and how we experience it. And when you cover it and you defend free speech stroke hate speech, that's what you're reporting. That's how much it hurts. And so I didn't want to come here. I'm kind of done with all of this, frankly. But I had to come here on behalf of my son and my father. I could not just walk away and leave this unsaid. That's why I'm here. So who are we? What are we pursuing? What is everybody afraid of? My son is not raping anybody. What are we afraid of? I heard that Geraldine Collins attends church, which would make two of us, which means we would read the same Bible, which means we pray to the same God. What does Geraldine Collins pray? Did God, please don't let any more niggers come to Buckingham to rape our daughters? What do I pray? Did God please protect my life and my opportunities and that of my son from hatred, from blocking of opportunities? The one God is listening to these two prayers, what would he say? I put it to you, what would he think he would respond to those two polarised prayers? He might say, you live life at the level of the flesh, but there's a heart in you. The highest level at which you can live life is the level of your heart. And the hatred and the fear that you have isn't found at the level of the pigment of the skin. It's what's in people's hearts that you should be afraid of or you should run toward. That might be what he says. Geraldine put up this post and she put underneath, I thought this was good. Interestingly, the same Bible that we read says, Genesis, when God created the world, at the end of it, he looked around and said, I thought that was good. What was good? Which one of these scenarios is really good? And this is not a religious kind of spout. I'm just trying to get beneath this craziness that we're living with, that we think people operate and exist at the level of the pigment of the skin and that there's no higher or deeper level to humanity. Can we please wake up and do better? Is what I have to say. And I think I'm kind of, I'm kind of done there.
Thank you very much. I understand you're very passionate about what we've talked about and I appreciate you coming here and sharing that with us this evening.
I'm actually angry, but I'm tired and I'm angry at having to live with this for so long. And I'm disappointed that Buckingham, for all the beautiful people, all of you who have been so hard to be and who I love, you're all getting tarnished with this, this sort of stuff. And, you know, we couldn't live up to our existence than this. We shouldn't do this to ourselves, is how I feel. So Rebecca needs to speak. And this is very traumatic for me, so if you don't mind, I'll be very much. So walk home and maybe have a good week. Good night.
Thank you. Rebecca, are you happy to speak now?
Yeah, I will say a few things. I'm really not happy to speak. I'm rarely, you know, I think using the word passionate to describe Karen and what she just said is, is the wrong word. Karen and I, it's not an accident that Karen and I are the only two people of colour, are the only people who are here to stand up against this this evening. And as Karen, sorry, I can hear an echo. Is that, are you okay, your end? Can you hear me?
We need to just sort out the technology. We're getting it. Okay, we should be all right. Perhaps if you could start again. And I do apologise, I shouldn't have used that term happy. You're willing to speak now.
I'm willing to speak and I would like to first of all just say that everything that Karen also agree with. And I feel that, first of all, the delay and the leniency from the Shire Council has been appalling in this matter. I believe that the only reason that we're here this evening and this has finally come to a place where we can have a discussion about the actions of councillor Geraldine Collins is largely the persistence of Karen Adams and Mark Dalling and to a certain extent myself in petitioning and petitioning, probably to the extent of 300 emails to Buckinghamshire County Council to, to try to move this to a place where justice is done. My second point is about what it is to be an anti-racist. We are, we are a progressive society and I think we should pride ourselves on that. And yet in Buckingham, we seem to be five, six, I don't know how many steps behind the curve. And we need to wake up and we need to start to think more progressively if we are to have a town council that represents the people of Buckingham. When I first came to see the town council two years ago in June of 2020, I entered the council meeting expecting that I would be greeted as an equal human being with a right to speak. And sadly, I wasn't. I didn't feel that way, which is why I am very, very reluctant to be here again this evening and be feeling that I, again, have to be the person who is fighting to make a difference when actually the people who should be fighting against racism in our society and in our institutions and systemic racism, as we have witnessed over the last two years since Geraldine Collins made the post, should be the white people in our community, not the people of colour. As I said at the beginning of this meeting, it's a tragedy that it's Karen Adams and I are the only two people who have come into this meeting from the public in order to try to say and petition to the member sat around the table today that it is vital that you act as anti-racists and that you undertake the training that is necessary in order for you to represent your community fairly and justly and to remove your antagonism towards those who are fighting for equality. And to get a grip, basically, you know, we are in 2022 now and I hope that I would see that the members of the council respond this evening to the findings really strongly. And I, I understand that because of the systemic racism and prejudice that's built into our government systems, which appalls me, that there is very little that you can do in terms of your own actions. But there are things that you can do. You can speak. You can speak on behalf of your community. You can speak on behalf of the members of your community who are people of colour. You can undertake training so that you understand what unconscious bias is, so that you understand what microaggressions are, so that you understand the situation of where racist racial prejudice has arisen from and even the term racism itself. So I was very hurt by receiving notice of Geraldine's post, which was nearly two years ago, a year and a half ago. I am heartened that the decision has been made after having spoken to a lawyer about this. You contacted me from Buckinghamshire County Council, who was employed independently to investigate this and really candidly said to me over a year ago that this was unacceptable and inappropriate and it was racism. I'm heartened that we've got to this place. However, I'm saddened that in the report, the term racism is not really there. You know, it's a weak report. It doesn't really, really go into the strength of character that is needed by a county council, by those representing their people. And I hope that some action is taken tonight and some, some conversation and some words by those around the table that starts to move us in a direction where we can be a more equal and more inclusive community and that the council are seen by those members of our community like me as a place of safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've been forced to move forward to our agenda. You're very welcome to remain with us for the meeting if you would like to.
I will stay for now. I'm hoping that there might be some response.
Thank you. We do have a formal agenda this evening and we aren't at liberty to move beyond that. The only thing we could do, if you were willing, is anybody got any questions or no questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry.
I do actually have a question, please. Rebecca, you have obviously acknowledged that in many ways our hands are tied as to what we can do. You have given us some indication of what it is that you would, what action you would like to see. I was wondering whether you could spell out a little bit more what you would like us, you've said you'd like us to obviously undertake the training, which is on the agenda for tonight. You'd like us, I think, to speak up and I would perhaps like to understand a bit better whether you have any concrete wishes of how we should speak up. Is there anything in particular you would like us to do?
Yes, so regarding training, I think that the training in the Equalities Act would be key. I can recommend trainers because I work as a head of inclusion and I have various people that I work with really closely. Mo Patel, who works for Oxford Health and he is in the EDI role there and he has a whole plethora of training which could be made available to you and is a wonderful person that I'm sure you would enjoy working with, as well as Equalities Act training, unconscious bias training and also anti-racist training. And then in terms of speaking up, I would hope to hear from the, for the first time really, from members around the table that there is an understanding of how hurtful the, the post that was made was and also within that context, some of the other comments that councillor Geraldine Collins and others around the table made when I first came, with cap in hand to the council to say, can we work together to set up a group that explores how we can support diversity in our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I should say that the town clerk and myself did receive a number of messages from other members of the public who probably would have liked to have been here this evening expressing similar views to the ones that Rebecca Clark and Karen Adams have expressed this evening.
Okay. Are those names available or are they? If it was correspondence, we read the correspondence after the meeting. If there was an email expressing those things, I think we need to know. You stated that they've made a statement, but there's no supporting information to that statement. So the context of it is lost. We've heard from two speakers this evening about the hurt and the distress. And you've mentioned that. I just wonder whether there's any context to that supporting evidence that we could see after the meeting, if it's more appropriate, but I think we do need to read it.
We would have to check with those people. So I think people tended to contact myself and Margaret on the basis that the intention was to contact the town clerk and the mayor. They didn't necessarily understand that they were sending something that would be shared with all councillors. So I'd have to go back and check with them if they're happy.
But it's been quoted in a meeting, so that's context.
Thank you. Can I ask that we, in terms of standing orders, that everybody initially only speaks once and restricts themselves to three minutes to enable everyone to get a voice within a reasonable timeframe. And to stand up as well. Yeah, we have agreed, we got into the habit of sitting during Covid, but if we can get back into the habit of standing, if people are able to, that would be great. Thank you. So apologies for absence.
Apologies from councillor Arden, the councillor who can't be physically present. Councillor Collins has Covid and councillor White is on holiday.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, councillor Collins was hoping to be here, but she has got Covid symptoms, I think, kissing words, so she might just not be well enough. And you can't see them on the screen because the screen's only set up to show people with their cameras on, but councillor Arden and Ossie Bogan are present on Zoom as well.
Thank you very much. Do we have any declarations of interest? We now move on to the determination of the code of conduct complaint and we have a report before us from the town clerk. It first read the main recommendations. Equality training be arranged for members by the town clerk at the earliest date possible as part of Buckingham Town Council's ongoing good practice. And members be offered appropriate social media training. And members note the Buckingham Town Council media policy, which was attached to the papers, and also note item 43 of the council handbook in relation to social media policy. So it's open. Councillor Collins.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just like to start by thanking Rebecca and Karen, if you might have the honour of working on the Equality Working Group, for their input tonight. I think it's disgraceful it's taken, as we've heard, 15 months for Buckinghamshire Council to actually hear this subcommittee. But before this council considers how to deal with the alleged breach of code of conduct by a councillor, I would draw members' attention to the following. First, that Buckingham Town Council was not informed of the decision of Buckinghamshire Council hearing Subcommittee for more than three weeks after the hearing. It was in the press and on social media before Buckingham Town Council members were officially informed. The fact it took 15 months for this complaint to be determined should also be a great concern, whatever the reason. We've got a letter on in appendix B where Nick Graham, Service Director for Buckinghamshire Council Legal and Domestic Services, stated in his covering letter that the subcommittee attributed no fault at all to the town council. Well, this contradicts paragraph two of the findings, which states that the Facebook profile picture of councillor Collins in Mayor Regalia was as a result of a request by the town council. Might be nonsensical, but it puts the blame onto the town council. The town clerk has since confirmed that no such request has ever made by Buckingham Town Council. So in this, the subcommittee finding was in error. The findings recommend a programme of training for all councillors and officers. This hearing was held to investigate a complaint against one councillor and I'd submit the subcommittee exceeded its authority by extending recommendations to cover the whole council and its offices. Some were not even on Buckingham Town Council when this breach occurred in August 2020. I'm sure we'd all welcome equality training, but that's a matter for Buckingham Town Council, not one to be dictated to us by Buckinghamshire Council. I therefore propose in the light of the above that this council informs Mr Graham, we do not accept the recommendation regarding the whole council and its officers, although we do accept its findings regarding councillor Collins. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Collins. Councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Karen. When people ask me about what it's like to be a town councillor, I usually say that it's interesting and great fun. And I'm proud to work at the town in this way. I explain that although we have our differences, generally speaking, we work collaboratively, collegially and respectfully. This incident has clouded and corroded some of those descriptions for me and maybe for others too. I fear that it has damaged our overall reputations as a council and I'm very sad and very angry about that. Therefore, how can we as a body respond to this case will show to the town how committed to be able to uphold code of conduct, our own standing orders, our integrity and our independence and that we believe in civic leadership, that values respects everyone, everyone. And I hope that we can move on from here stronger and we begin to repair the damage which I believe this incident has done to us. This is a shameful day for the town council and I wish we did not have to be here talking about this. But here we are and our task this evening is not to revisit the details of what happened. This is because we have the comprehensive report from the Shire Committee, which is a thorough investigation based on a careful review of all the facts, the evidence, the perspectives, it assembled. And the committee came to the clear conclusion that councillor Collins, while she was our mayor, did indeed breach our code of conduct. The committee has concluded that only the councillor Collins forwarded racist material and the add-in comment thought this was good. To her fellow councillor, she then sought to write a false narrative to explain her actions when all this began public. All that is established now. To suggest what happened did not happen is, in my view, now out of order. The challenge we now face is how do we move on from here? Collectively and humbly asking our community to trust the whole council once again. What happens tonight will determine whether we are on the path to doing this or not. And right now, I fully believe this is a mistake. Turning to the two ideas put forward by the Shire Committee, I think we should note that those suggested actions do give the impression that they thought, despite the caveat in the COVID letter, and maybe others think so too, I think that's evidently the case from presentations we've had, that the whole council is in some way at fault as well. As I've already said, that upsets me deeply. Our role in this town is predicated on positivity and our honour. We must be known as people who all tell the truth and that we are people who are 100% committed to respect for all members of our community. There is no wiggle about this. My concern is that the suggestion for equality training is that it feels a bit like putting the whole class on detention for the behaviour of one's youth. And the other is much irrelevant as we already have these policies in our office. I think councillor Collins' actions deserve a proportionate and focused response from the town council. However, our clerk has been advised that we are constrained by the insubordinate of the Shire Committee. The current legal advice suggests that we are confined to either accepting or rejecting these limited proposals and no more. However, these two proposals on their own, in importance, are, in my view, far, far insufficient to fully address what has happened. I will add a personal statement here. I have spent almost all of my life actively campaigning for equality and against all forms of discrimination. I am sickened to my very core and deeply distressed by the lack of statements and actions that are examples of rural racism. And frankly, I really don't want to be in the company of anyone who promotes such views. I'm not sure we yet have, but I hope that at some point, some mix of honour, shame and integrity will come into play here. As a body, and I accept that we don't have the constitutional option to sack or suspend councillor Collins, but we're even to ask him to resign as only the electorate has that authority. But as an independent town council, I think we need to decide carefully about what we can do. As I've already said, I am not persuaded that the two recommendations from the Shire Committee are anywhere close to sufficient or proportionate in addressing what has happened. Although I do think the whole council should embark on appropriate training and development as recommended by Rebecca. As a consequence, I do propose that we keep this matter open or we ask our clerk to seek further legal advice on what exactly our powers are under legislation and our standing orders. I've reviewed the Ledbury Town Council case, several reports of it and the applicable legislation. Whilst I have the utter respect for our esteemed town clerk, I believe there are some interpretations and the presidential connections between that case, the Ledbury case, and ours are at least tenacious, if not completely absent. This needs exploring further. For example, if the law requires that an independent person should be consulted on the sanctions, then I see no reason why we should not do that too. There are several questions that we're answering and we do not have to, we do not have to make a decision this evening, especially as councillor Collins, as we have heard, but she's not present, but she's not in the area by the COVID. We cannot make decisions this evening. So I would think I propose that we do not make the specific decisions on the Shire Council's recommendations at today's meeting and that we ask our clerk to seek further legal advice on just exactly what I said. There is no need to rush things to life.
Thank you, councillor Harvey. Do you have a second just for that?
I'm going to speak before we, I think it's too early to go into second, whether.
Do you understand that?
Yeah, point of order, ma'am. I did make a proposal after I spoke.
I beg your pardon.
Yeah, I think.
Can we, councillor Stutchbury, can you remind me what your proposal was, councillor Collins?
Yes, I'd finish by saying, I therefore propose that in the light of the above, that this council informs Mr Graham, we do not accept the recommendation regarding the whole council and its officers, although we do accept its findings regarding councillor Collins.
Thank you. So councillor Harvey.
Well, I'll second that under the rider that we ask our clerk to do further investigations to our legal grounds. If councillor Collins accepts that amendment.
That's acceptable, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a discussion on that proposal as amended. Councillor Stutchbury and then councillor, oh, sorry, councillor Mordu, it indicated earlier that we wanted to speak. I beg your pardon.
I was chaired Standards Board, so I know the workings of Standards Board. Any form of discrimination is wrong, whether it be disability or about colour. Between black and white or white and black or brown, whatever colour, it doesn't matter. I've been subjected I've been subjected to discrimination, not in the same extent as other people have. But I do understand to a certain amount how it can affect you personally and your health and your livelihood. I do not see training as a weapon or as a punishment. I would do training whenever it's offered, because I feel it's necessary. And also, you might have done training as I have, and I think I've done it on disability and discrimination some years ago. But the law changes, and you should always be up to date with training. And I don't see this as a weapon from Buckinghamshire Council against the Buckingham Town Council. I see it as advice that Buckingham Town Council should undertake training. And I think Buckingham Town Council should, because how many town councillors here have actually done training? And the course I did was very, very good. And you're not going to change people who are inbuilt racists. But you might make them think, and training is all about thinking and trying to see how you can actually change your ways. And I think we should accept this offer. We know that our powers are limited. And what we're looking at is not to punish people, but to improve the way they think, the way they act and what they say. And I would accept the recommendation of Buckinghamshire Council. It's been going on for two years now, which hasn't been fair on either Geraldine Collins or us having this hanging over here. I'll say one thing about Facebook. If you put anything on Facebook, don't think it's secret for a start. And secondly, as a point of information, my ex-wife had been trying to get me to be friends with her on Facebook for years now. And she's been dead for two years, and she's still trying to contact me. And that is Facebook. You cannot get an answer from Facebook. They'll only answer your legal representative. And do I want to employ a lawyer to go and, at considerable expense, to argue with Facebook's lawyer? And the answer is no. But this is about Buckingham Town Council. I think we should have training, and we should all be up to date with what the current law is, the 2010 Equalities Act. And we should look at being the beacon of councils in our, how we work and how we think and how we act. So let us take the training and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Stutchbury, then councillor Davies, councillor Heatherington and councillor Shaffer.
Firstly, I'd be curvy, councillor Mordu, that we should take the training. To turn the training down through, the discussions about proportionality, if it can be taken separately. The training is offered as a means of us having a greater understanding of the questions being raised by the people in the public session, by the paperwork which is before us, and by the issues that we've all got to deal with. We could individualise this and we could say things about individuals. I think that's all been said in social media. That's all been said in the hearing, that's all in the paperwork. So to repeat that is, I think it's insulting to the people who attended the meeting earlier, and it's insulting to the findings. I've sat on standards committees, I've sat on standards committees with councillor Mordu in the past. People on the standards committee are bound by limited rules that they're able to enact. They can only go by what the law supports them. Since 2010 and the Localism Act, the powers that they have to implement actions against people like ourselves, councillors, have been lessened. And I listened to the words in the public session about that this all comes from legislation, which is quite correct. If you weaken legislation to be able to enforce sanction against yourselves and us to enforce sanctions against each other, you end up exactly where we are today. A situation which is not the making of anybody present. And I feel eternally uncomfortable with the fact that we've got lots of new councillors on this council who are not present at any time when this was discussed and are in a room having to discuss something that they may have fallen into, which is the expression here. So what we should do is what councillor Mordu said, take the training. The other points that was raised by councillor Collins and councillor John Harvey are really good points. But I think they are secondary to accepting the proposals from the council, because not to accept the proposals from the council would give the wrong signal and would say that by some means we thought that we could avert that ruling and avert that judgment. Because if we don't abide our own standing orders, which is what the judgment was based upon, because our standing orders mirror Buckinghamshire Council's standing orders, we would be averting and insulting the very people who feel offended and quite rightly insulted. So I think councillor Mordu is right, we accept that. How we deal with it going forward is the important matter. I, we can all say personal statements about our lives, I could give you many, but I won't. But I don't believe this is, that this matter should define Buckingham Town Council, shouldn't define the new members to the council, it shouldn't define members of this council who were present on this council proceeding that and maybe present proceeding afterwards. We have to live and learn, and we have to make decisions based upon what our experiences is and what we see before us. So I hope that we'll agree to accept again what councillor Mordu said, to accept the recommendation, because he's right. I've sat on standards committees with Howard, I've worked with Howard, he's absolutely right. If the findings don't, not to accept it would be the wrong move. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you Rebecca and thank you Karen for coming and speaking. I very much wish that it wasn't necessary to have this meeting. I very much wish that it wasn't necessary for councillors to be recommended to be having equality and diversity training and anti-racism training. But unfortunately, it appears that it is necessary. Not necessarily individual members of this council, but since I've been in this area, having moved here, I was in Nottingham city centre prior to coming here. I've lived and worked in London, I've grown in Southwark and in Chesham. And this area, in this area, I've seen example after example of underlying racism. This is a very, it is a real problem in this, in this local area. And Rebecca, Karen, everybody else that might be watching on this podcast, I feel for you. I can't say I feel your pain because I haven't, I haven't experienced that. And I'm not going to say I've experienced any sort of racism or anything. I've experienced sexism. Yeah, a great, great deal. I think that it should be compulsory for everybody that is in public office in any way, shape or form to undergo equality and diversity training. And I think we should embrace this opportunity to learn and develop ourselves and go some way to stopping the situation that is prevalent in this area. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you councillor Davies. Councillor Heatherington.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, it's quite an irony that only this morning I attended BM Calc's online training about councillor interests and code of conduct, never realising what was going to be happening tonight. Karen Adams said, we all know the incident. Well, actually, I don't. I've only been a councillor for one year. I haven't got a clue what's been going on. It's been a complete mystery. I've wondered why councillor Collins hasn't been turning up at meetings, but it's been like the elephant in the room. So I find it extremely difficult to make any kind of informed comment on what I think has been going on or what we should do about it. I take on board that training is always, is always a good, a good thing. And I think we should add safe use of social media to our training. Because I, I fear that people are should be given more support in not getting themselves into a lot of trouble. Facebook can be an extremely toxic media to use. I myself have fallen foul of one of the Buckingham Facebook groups, and I have been blocked for it. And it's caused me huge emotional stress. So when we're thinking about supporting people with lots of different needs, we should also be thinking about, can we maybe affecting people's mental health? So that's why I think that people should be helped not to get into trouble with social media.
Thank you. One of the recommendations is that members be offered appropriate social media training, as well as the equalities training. Thank you councillor Heatherington. Councillor Shaffer next.
Let me add my thanks to Rebecca and to Karen for being here tonight in a situation that I understand is very painful and rightly so. And possibly to an extent that not all of us or that we cannot fully comprehend, but it is very clear from what you said and from your expressions how painful this is, and quite rightly so. I, like everybody else, have think equalities training should be undertaken by all of us, because it's always a good thing to be doing. This is an incident that has brought the town council into disrepute with a significant and important group of our community. We must do everything in our power to reverse that or to change that, to not only show ourselves to be inclusive and open, but genuinely learn how we can be inclusive and open. Not as we understand it, but as those members of the community who have been hurt by this understand it. I am therefore very uneasy about the extent of these recommendations. And I would be very happy to seek further advice if there is anything else that we can do in order to express our concern and our displeasure. At the very minimum, I believe we ought to add half a sentence to the first, to the recommendation of the training that expressly expects councillor Collins to attend this training, which is in the Shire Council recommendation, but is implied obviously in the one that we have before us, but I think it ought to be explicit. I also believe that the council ought to find a form of words and release this in a public statement, perhaps in a press statement, as to our concern or to distance ourselves from racist comments that have been made and have been shared on social media. And that this is not something that the council condones or supports in any shape or form. I don't know exactly what that form of words is, and I would recommend that we consult with people like Rebecca, like Karen and others who might be willing to give us their thoughts on this.
Thank you very much. I think we've got councillor Adonah here.
Thank you, ma'am. Just to clear a few things up, councillor Collins did report it to the police, and they asked her about skating it on her behalf, because her, I think if you looked at her Facebook account, there's nothing prior and nothing after that's racist at all on there. So to just to have one thing that appeared, and neither her or I saw it on either of our Facebook pages is odd, so is.
I think just on that point, we're not debating, Buckinghamshire Council have reached their conclusions about that, and we're not able to debate that this evening.
It's been mentioned, that's all.
Okay.
But also to pick up a point that Howard, councillor Mordu made. And I showed the town clerk and somebody else, I can't remember who, a friend of mine contacted me on Facebook, on Messenger, and it wasn't her. And there's two accounts, there's, and both of the accounts go back to her profile. I'd be happy to share that if anybody wants to see that. So it is doable. I think to prolong anything that we do further, it would be cruel. This has caused harm as well to Geraldine. I think that needs to be said. You know, the fact is, is whether people think that she's guilty or innocent is still, has had an effect on her. And I think that we accept the recommendations from the Shire Council and move on.
Thank you. Just councillor Maunty.
Thank you, Madam Ma'am. When I've sat through all the councillors talking about diversity, training, I've felt I was invisible. A person of colour, totally invisible, and as a councillor, and you should be going on a diversity course, really? That's an insult, an insult. I have lived in three countries and I've experienced discrimination of all forms, racism, religious, you name it, I've experienced it. Just all you're concerned about is the racism. There's discrimination of other forms. I've lived in Africa, I've lived in India, I've lived in Britain. I think I have more knowledge of diversity and discrimination than any of you here. And I challenge you now, if you can explain, that if you have lived in all these countries and experienced that. And I have really felt insulted, really insulted, that I was an invisible person today, because you're all talking about having a course, learning the class about diversity and racism, really? This is a form of racism in itself. I do not believe this council is racist. If they was racist, they would not have appointed me or elected me to be the mayor of Buckingham. So let's not beat ourselves up by saying that we need to go on a course of diversity and racism. Because I do not, and I still believe that, is a racist council. Because if there was, I would not have been a mayor. And I feel, still feel insulted that a lot of the councillors have decided to go for this diversity training. Because I will not be going on this diversity training, and I'll tell you that now.
Thank you councillor Maunty. Councillor Tryne.
Thank you. It's been said that we've been offered training. We haven't, we've been asked to go on training. It's not being given to us, we'll have to organise it. So that's one point. And secondly, I don't think we ought to be vindictive. We are as a council, we ought to be inclusive, we ought to learn, take the comments, whether it be for a councillor or collectively, do some corrective action and move on, because that way we can show that we are the bigger body and not be vindictive down a single path to a particular case in question. Now, I also went on a code of conduct training today, coincidentally, it was arranged a few weeks ago, or even longer actually. And under sanctions, the lawyer gave us four points. First of all, as we already know, or may not know, but it is that it's this council to deal with the complaints, and the power isn't given to town councils or parish councils, because the government don't believe that we've got enough bodies and monetary backing to do those complaints. That's why it's done. That's why it's done at a higher level. And the district council can only recommend, it has no powers to impose sanctions. We can't impose, we can't imprison a person, we can't stop them going into buildings. Maybe there are some other sanctions that can be imposed, but you've got to be very careful how you do it. There's a Taylor and Honiton case in person where it's about financial interests. And that got very messy. So it can be done, but it needs to be appropriate and in the right direction. Now, we as a town council, we have no obligations to accept any of the recommendations. We could just say thank you very much, make our own up and go forward. Probably wouldn't recommend that, but you know. And thirdly, which I thought was quite interesting, the sanctions, the purpose of the sanctions is generally to ensure continued operation of the town council rather than punishing the councillor concerned. Go to your first slide. So I think if we can be a bigger body, you know, take the training, do whatever else we feel necessary, but let's not go down a narrow street.
I hear you councillor Tryne. Councillor Willett.
Thank you very much. I initially wasn't going to speak in this debate tonight. But then I felt I had to. And I want to thank Rebecca Clark and Karen, all the speakers that spoke tonight. I think that we should accept the recommendations for the training. It was deeply, it's deeply shameful that this has been brought to this council chamber. My mother, he's Puerto Rican. And he said to me tonight, oh, what are you up to? And I had to explain to him that I was in the meeting about this very subject. And it's difficult if you say nothing, because if you say nothing, you essentially stay silent and we let down our constituents and our ward members and our citizens that we here represent today. I think that we should accept this training and accept this training in full. And definitely councillor Collins has to attend this training to start building those bridges back with her community, as we all must do in this council chamber. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We, we've got a proposal on the table effectively to postpone a decision tonight. And we've also heard councillors speaking for accepting the recommendations of the report from Buckinghamshire Council and undertaking that training as, as a means of learning, as we're all on a lifelong learning journey. And then perhaps enabling us to move forward. So there are two quite divergent ideas around the table this evening. I can see councillor Harvey's hand up. Councillor Harvey.
I think what both Mark and I agree on, and maybe others too, is to accept the recommendations as they currently formulated will be to close this matter down. It probably isn't proportionate and, and isn't sufficient. And whilst I agree with what councillor Tryne says, nothing should be done that is vindictive. Everything that we would agree to, to be proportionate and progressive, absolutely agree with that. But I don't know what that is yet. We need to talk about that at some point, I think. But I also think that if people want to and feel that they would benefit from it, then everyone should be encouraged to do some sort of anti-discriminatory training. It isn't just about racism, it's about homophobia, it's about sexism, it's about ageism, it's about the full gamut. And I think we should be looking at that because I don't think, I don't believe in the hierarchy of discrimination. Racism isn't worse than homophobia, which isn't worse than sexism. All forms of discrimination are equally bad. If you put forward the idea that one is worse than the other, you're engaging in the very thing you're trying to not do. In which you can't have the anti-discrimination and judge that some forms of discrimination are worse than others. It's, they're all bad. So I think, I'm still proposing that we don't accept the recommendations and we admit them straight back to the Shire Council. They didn't understand this at all. They didn't even bother to, to look at what policies we had in place. They put in the bit that councillor Cole mentioned about somehow we instructed councillor Collins to put the picture of herself in there earlier on the Facebook page, which never happened. Why would they put that in without even checking whether that happened or not? And moreover, they haven't checked last standing orders. Because I said I would say very clearly that when a breach is reported to us, it's down to us to decide what to do about it. That's what last standing orders say. That's what probably every parish in the country says in last standing orders because it's part of the model and that's produced by now. Which was revised, by the way, in 2020, two years after the case of Lavery. So there are deep procedural matters in this which I think deserve to be fully and properly and further investigated before we make a final decision. So I'm proposing, along with Mark, that we reject the recommendations, that we ask the town clerk to, to, to go back and do some further investigation and debate with his colleagues in the SLCC and beyond, I'm sure beyond. And separately, if we wish to, we also agree tonight to town council to offer anti-discrimination training to everyone. With a rider that we would hope that councillor Collins in particular is going to avail herself of that. But I think we should keep the two things separate because as councillor Mordi points out, recommending training is not a weapon. It shouldn't be used in that kind of way. This is the kind of vindictiveness that councillor Tryne was suggesting in fact. If you're going to take some anti-discrimination training, the last thing you want people to feel the need to, they're obliged to be there because that's not the best spirit we go to a training development course in, is it? So I think the two things are separate. I think we can agree one thing and then let's talk about the other thing beyond that. But I do think we need to try and give ourselves some breathing space to move further recommendations back and give ourselves some time to think about what else. If nothing, it may be nothing, and I'm well aware of that, but we take ourselves some time to think about what that means. And I know this might involve other costs and I know this might involve other things, but we've waited 20 or more months to be here now. There is no need to rush things tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Town clerk wanted to comment.
So on a practical note, just thinking about what isn't, isn't possible. So I've spoken to the monitoring officer, I've looked at NALC and SLCC advice, all of which agree that it's, we do not have any power to add to the sanctions at all. So it would be possible for you to instruct me to go and take further advice, but that would be by specialist legal advice. And the only outcome of that which would satisfy what councillor Harvey is trying to achieve would be a prolonged legal approach, which, and we're talking months and months and months and a lot of money. And ultimately, that could only end up in being another test case because you're getting the area of subjective law. So the only way that would actually be satisfied possibly would be in court. So you're in immediate risk that councillor Collins would be absolutely within her right then to challenge the, this council and take us to court. And if the council lost, then this council would be subject to, and the councils that have been down that road have lost a lot of public money through that process. And I think councillors should reflect whether going down that road right now would actually address the issue or would actually add frustration and lack of clarity to all those involved at this point.
I agree. Well said. Thank you. Got councillors Stutchbury and councillor Mordi and then I think we need.
I, I, I think that I respect everyone's views and, and the clarity. Now, unlike most people, I'm privileged enough that I actually know the officer. The legal officer quoted in here, I talk to him on numerous things on a regular basis. If the Buckinghamshire council had more powers available to them, but I think Rebecca pointed out in the start about the weakness of the legislation that meets as to where we are today, they would have made stronger and more robust statements. It's the reason it probably took so long, if you were a fair person, is because they were deliberating whether there was anything they could possibly do. So I think for us tonight not to agree, the limited, and it is limited, that's, to be honest, it's very limited and, and satisfies nobody's position from Buckinghamshire Council Standards Committee. It at least shows that we accept that there was a hearing. It shows we accept there was a finding and it shows we accept what it was. And that was done in a quasi-legal place. For us to then say that we are somehow better than a quasi-legal hearing and that we can then start making law, the town clerk says we need to discuss that separately in a more tempered, less frivol atmosphere because that is a really important decision that we'd have to take. And there is always the hope, isn't there, that, that by undertaking that training for those which are willing to, and as was said, nobody can be compelled to do anything, that we improve the patch going forward. Those who have picked up knowledge within it can support those who haven't and maybe we can move forward. Because I am not content to live in a society when sections of it are offended unfairly. If I was to say anything, my late father in 1968, when communities come to this country, done all he could to support people. And I think his approach to community was the right approach. You get to know the people, support the community, where people come from and what you do. And when you live here, you're all equal, you're all English and you're all part of our country. And I think if we don't take the training, we could so easily, so easily attract to offend. So I think that does, and I do say when I say it, I am really conscious that there are new members of this council who are not party to any of this. And if they accept the training as new members, that should be a sign for all of us that it's the right thing to do.
Councillor Mordi.
I propose we accept the training being offered to us.
Thank you. Councillor Shaffer, then councillor Cole.
I would like to propose an amendment, oh, sorry. I could repeat an earlier point. I would like to propose an amendment to the proposal. And that is a rider that we strongly recommend and encourage councillor Collins to avail himself of that training. And that as a county, the town council, we also issue a statement that says for a start that we deeply regret the hurt to members of our community that has arisen from these, from this incident. And that we repeat our commitment against discrimination of, that's the wrong wording, but that we strongly condemn discrimination of any form. And probably the other way around, that we condemn discrimination and we deeply regret the hurt that this has caused to members of our community. Thank you.
I think procedurally, we're in a bit of a mother because we've got now a proposal about to amend something and we've got another proposal from councillor Cole, who wanted to speak now anyway, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I just, having heard what the town clerk has said to us, I'm going to withdraw my support for the amendment which councillor Harvey proposed to my original proposal. My original proposal, just to remind everyone, was that this council informs Mr Graham we do not accept the recommendation regarding the whole council and its officers, although we do accept its findings regarding councillor Collins. That, that was my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, which I think was seconded by councillor Harvey.
I mean, it, it, that's fine, that's okay.
So are we ready to vote? Oh, sorry.
Can you, can I just say, first of all, I need a second there, because I don't think I've got one.
One second.
But the other point is, what councillor Anya says is separate to accepting the training. And whilst they're all very, very valid points, I think there should be a separate issue. We're talking about accepting the training as per the recommendations of the Standards Committee.
And effectively, we're on 3.1, which was receiving a decision from the Hearing Subcommittee.
It's a point of order, chairman, I'd like to say that the officer keeps getting quoted in here. The officer is not the determinant person. The officer gives you for the committee. The officer didn't make the decision, the committee made the decision. So please don't confuse the legal officer, he can only interpret what the committee's findings are and he writes to you as a professional person. So we should not refer to the officer in the same way. And I have to say that because officers have to represent the council, so it's wrong to do so. He's just representing the findings of the committee.
So councillor Cole, just to clarify, on 3.1.
I, I, I'd say I think we're actually on 3.3. Because what we're doing is discussing the report recommendations. So 3.1, 3.2 are just to receive. We're actually discussing 3.3, which are recommendations 1.21, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4. So we're currently discussing recommendation one, which, and the recommendation says equalities training will be arranged for members by the town clerk at the earliest date possible as part of Buckingham town council ongoing good practice.
Yes.
Yep, I feel that.
And councillor Cole.
No, I said.
No, I meant in terms of whether it goes against his proposal.
True. No, councillor, no.
I'm getting in a.
Councillor Cole initially seconded councillor Harvey's proposal. Councillor Cole has withdrawn his support for councillor Harvey's proposal. But councillor Cole's proposal, which is to accept the recommendations regarding councillor Collins, but not on the whole council.
That's, that's correct.
So, which I think the first proposal.
Just to be absolutely clear, I made that proposal, councillor Harvey then made. He, he wanted to add that, which I accepted at the time until I heard your advice, which is about delaying it. Could I just please answer councillor Stutchbury? I'm not picking on an officer. Nick Graham is the service director of the Legal and Democratic Services for Buckinghamshire Council and it is he who imparted the results of this to us in his letter, which you have appendix B. So he is the right and proper person to reply to. Thank you.
Didn't really like it.
Councillor Harvey.
All right, I'm now totally agree with you. I thought councillor Cole.
Can you stand?
Sorry, I thought councillor Cole was recommending that we don't accept the recommendations from the Shire Committee. We don't accept the recommendations. If we want to accept the recommendation from ourself up, that we do call this training in its own right, I'll support that. But I will also support councillor Cole saying that we don't accept the recommendations from the Shire Committee. We separate these two things. Because if we accept the recommendations from the Shire Committee, we are somehow suggesting that that's insufficient and proportionate response to the incident that happened. And I don't think it is. I fully accept that us doing equalities training, you know, whoever wishes to do that is a good thing and I will encourage everyone to do that, even those that experience very strong discrimination. It's always good to, to, to do that because nobody here, I don't think, experiences poor forms of discrimination in, in all of the full glories that, that it is. But I have supported seconding councillor Cole's motion that we reject the, we accept the report and the, and the conclusion that it came to, but we don't accept the recommendations. Because the conclusion is well thought out, well argued, Article 10 Human Rights Act, blah, 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 blah. All of that has been dealt with, that's done, that's dusted. We accept that, but we don't accept the recommendations. That is, I think, what councillor Cole was saying.
So the agenda does not give councillors the opportunity to accept or reject the recommendation. The agenda is to receive the decision, to receive correspondence and then to receive and discuss my report. So this council doesn't have the power to accept or reject a decision because the decision has been made and cannot be appealed.
Exactly. Can I propose you need to vote?
Well.
On what? I, I, I think we had two proposals of.
So would it be helpful in terms of councillor Shaffer's proposal? I think councillor Shaffer actually proposed two amendments in one, really. So in terms of councillor Shaffer's first amendment, which was just to amend. So in terms of councillor Shaffer's first amendment, which was just to amend the wording of my recommendation to be in line with the decision, which is that equality's training be arranged for members of the town clerk and that councillor Collins attend the training. So that would be consistent with the decision. So I think.
Yes. Could you just go back to arrange equality's training for those who wish it? Or is it?
That's not what, that's not what it says, and that's not what the decision said. So the proposal at the moment for the council is that I arrange training for the town council. That was the decision.
But it's not compulsory.
Just for clarification, what it actually does say is that training will be arranged for all councillors. This is a free country, and an individual can choose whether they wish to attend or not.
Yep.
Correct.
And what I'm saying is that that training is arranged for all councillors to attend, which should encourage councillor Collins to attend, unless this is a police state, which is not, we cannot make her.
Correct.
We've got a proposal to move to the vote. We're voting on councillor Cole's proposal.
By the way, the town clerk seemed to be indicating that councillor Cole's motion is out of order.
Yeah.
And if that's the view of the town clerk, then I guess we're going to have to accept that and simply go back to what the recommendations are in this report.
Correct. Are you, are you?
Yes, I will accept the town clerk's advice on that. Withdraw my proposal.
Thank you. That's very helpful. So we've got on the table then recommendation one as amended by, or the proposed amendment by councillor Shaffer, that equality's training be arranged for members, including councillor Collins, by the town council at the earliest date possible as part of Buckinghamshire Council's ongoing good practice. Those in favour.
Point of order, point of order. We have to agree the amendment.
We haven't agreed the amendment. And that was in my wording. Sorry.
You can't just move your amendment.
It's very complicated. We're getting ourselves in the muddle. But I think it should not say including councillor Collins, but it should say that councillor Collins is encouraged to attend.
No, you can't.
I can, we can encourage her. We can request her, but we can encourage her. Do we have a second of that amendment?
I'm not saying, I understand that before you order. In the report, which we're now being obliged to follow, it says all officers which councillor proposes should attend.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we're accepting this report from the Shire Council. We accept the whole report.
Certainly, that's why I said.
That was actually, sorry, that was all I was proposing, that we have the wording, add the wording as it is in the... Thank you. So in that case, can we vote on that?
Yes, so we're voting on the, to accept the amendment to the proposal.
Yeah, which was how it was proposed about an hour ago.
The proposal is that equality's training be arranged for members by the town clerk at the earliest date possible as part of Buckinghamshire Council's ongoing practice, and councillor Collins should attend.
Point of order. Now councillor Collins should not be even mentioned until we get to item 3.6 on the agenda, which is how we deal with it.
Correct. I asked to move to the vote. I think understanding orders. I wasn't seconded to move to the vote, so we can carry on discussing it all night. Or we can move to the vote if it's seconded, is what councillor Mordu proposed, and I seconded with what's the paid work from Buckinghamshire Council, which where we are, which has been discussed immensely. Can we move to that so we can move to the next important item on the agenda? Because otherwise, we're just going to keep going round in circles, and it's very dissatisfactory for the people watching. And it shouldn't show the sincerity that I think is in the room.
Thank you. So we're, we're voting on?
We're voting on councillor Shaffer's amendment.
On whether to accept the amendment.
The wording referring to the councillor Collins should attend at the end of recommendation 1.1.
Yes.
Those in favour, please show it as recorded vote.
Those in favour, councillors Gately, Mordu, Stutchbury, Mahi, Ralph, Heatherington, Harvey, Davis, Willett, Shaffer, Cole and O'Donoghue.
And those against?
Councillor Try.
Any objections? Thank you. So that's the amendment we voted on. We now need to vote on that proposal as well, that recommendation as amended. Those in favour? 1.1.
So we're now voting on equality's training to be arranged for members by the town clerk at the earliest date possible as part of Buckinghamshire Council's ongoing good practice, and councillor Collins should attend.
Those in favour, please.
That was a vote. We voted, I think. So that's a unanimous vote in favour of that amendment. And that proposal, that's 1.1, agreed.
And 1.2 is members be offered appropriate social media training. Those in favour of that, please show.
Have we got some questions?
Is the recommendation in?
Keep that unanimous.
So do we need a proposer and a second for 1.3?
Well, those are both to note anyway.
They're to note anyway, so we don't need to. So are we happy to note the 1.3 and 1.1?
Yes.
Thank you. So, and then what 3.4 is appendix C to note the social media policy that's already been agreed. And to note the social media extract from the standard.
Noted.
And to decide what actions, if any, to take against the subject, standing on 14D.
Can I say to that point? So my view would be that this agenda was sent out before I revised my report. And given the revised report that you've already made, I don't think you have any power to take any other actions under that item. So unless any members disagree with me, I would suggest that that is completed business.
Yeah, I agree.
Can I just, for point of order, can I ask for the minutes? Because I know what councillors said about join the discussion, about the clarity of our own standing orders, which actually mirror Buckinghamshire Council's standing orders. So ironically, you could say that if they believe that we all need training, their own standing orders mirror our standing orders. So we mirror theirs. So equality must be equality. Surely Buckinghamshire Council, I could do it twice, which wouldn't be a bad thing. So I think we do have to have those, our standing orders in the minutes and those references related to this, because it's been said in the meeting by councillor Cole, who read it out very clearly, and it's been quoted by councillor Harvey. And I think that people really would be misbelieved that we hadn't got standard orders which cover these areas, which is why the action was taken in the first place.
Item four is a motion proposed by councillor Harvey. Councillor Harvey.
Sorry, before we move on, I don't know. In the report produced by the town clerk, he has highlighted that elements of our standing orders that appears now to be incorrect. Because he said that actually, when we look at item 14D, he says that we have the authority to decide on a response. But that actually means that we should only be doing it within the regulations by Buckinghamshire Council. If that is the case, as the town clerk has asserted, that we need to therefore change our standing orders to bring that into effect. And we need also to tell NALC that their model standing orders are also incorrect. So they should change their model in line with the legislative case to what we've been told has to be the case. So I think I'm proposing that if we can't do it this evening, but it's not strictly on the agenda, but we should put it on the next full council agenda, that we change our standing order to marry what's put in this report. Because if we don't do that, we're leaving standing orders that are actually incorrect.
Councillor Clark.
Can I just suggest that might be best to initially be discussed? I agree, it probably does need discussion. That's probably best to be discussed initially by resources.
Correct.
And their role, then we can recommend back to full council. So we will put on the agenda for the next resources meeting.
Thank you. Are we happy to move on to item four? It's a motion by councillor Harvey. Want me to read it out, councillor Harvey? Discrimination, abuse and hate undermines the spirit and the wellbeing of our civil society. Here in our town, Buckinghamshire Council reaffirms its policy of being against all forms of discrimination, including racism, and for inclusion, diversity and parity of esteem. Consequently, the town council pledges to be forever committed to making sure all members of our community are and feel included and respected, while simultaneously opposing proactively all forms of discrimination. To this end, the town council will actively seek out ways in which we might do this. Did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I honestly, honestly hope there will be no debate about this. Because I honestly, honestly hope that we've done enough talking tonight, and we've had some presentations from two very, very powerful speakers this evening, that there should be no debate about this at all. Because what I'm saying in this, in this, in this, in this motion is that we're reaffirming our commitment to not discriminating against anybody in our town or somehow lived without our town. And the key words in there are proactively and accidentally. It's not just a passive, we'll try not to do it. It's actually looking for ways in which we might actively promote anti-discriminatory practice. I sincerely hope there will be no debate about that.
Oh, I'll be to second the motion. I didn't need to second it, ma'am. Thank you. Councillor Try.
Yeah, they're a nice set of strong, powerful words, but where are they going? What is the motion? It doesn't enter press release. It isn't a change of our standing orders or code of conduct. We have got a lot of this, maybe not as powerful in our words of wisdom and in our ways of working, but it doesn't say what's due with these words.
Indeed, I, I, I accept that, councillor Try, but I do think in the context of what we've been discussing tonight, to have this kind of reaffirming statement of what is already enshrined in our documentation is actually a very positive thing for us to do at this point in the light of the hurt that has happened and we've heard about this evening. I think it's really important that we do reaffirm these basic principles. Councillor Stutchbury.
I'd just like to say that we support the mayor, we support councillor Harvey's principle. What we're trying to do here is close the meeting down correctly with a statement about our social minded intent to the community. This isn't, we aren't a legal legislative body. It's about our joint, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, councillor Harvey, this is about our joint endeavours to make a better society. I think that's what you're coming from. You're not actually trying to script any legal bases. Apart from that, we recognise there needs to be improvements everywhere. I think that's what you're trying to say, and if that's what you're trying to say, I'm very happy to do it. And I secondly say, I propose we move to the vote.
Yeah. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three. That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for your attendance and forbearance this evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Rebecca Clark, again for your, your patience as well with us this evening. And this is the point at which we have chair's announcements. One of the things that I want to announce is that the town clerk will be convening a meeting of the diversity group after Easter at the earliest opportunity. It's been in abeyance for a while, and I think that's one of the things that needs to resume and take our discussions further. Now, the other thing I wanted to say this evening, I had the honour of attending the declaration of the new High Sheriff of Buckinghamshire, who was, and this happened on April 1st in Milton Keynes. And I was very struck by the statements that were made by the three individuals, the new High Sheriff and the undersheriff. And I wanted to read out an extract from those this evening. But bear in mind, this is what the High Sheriffs are saying. "I will do right as well to poor as to rich in all things pertaining to my office. I will do no wrong to any person for any gift, reward, promise nor for favour, and I will treat all people equally, respecting the differences and diversity of our communities. I will support and encourage all who give of their time, skills and commitment for the benefit of others. I will lay aside all private prejudices and political interests. I will promote the peace, wellbeing and prosperity of this county and all its people." I found that a very moving statement, and I thought in the context of what we've been discussing this evening, a friend of mine said to me last week, it's doing the right thing even when no one's watching. And I think that's what it's about. If we're going to have true integrity, what we do when no one's watching. And I just wanted to share those words with you this evening. The dates of the next meetings, we have a special meeting in interim council on the 9th May, annual statutory meeting in full council on the 30th of May, and interim full council on the 27th of June.